You know, the world looks a little different over here. I'm right-handed, anyway.
Yeah, you do. Well, we'll use that one.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is 4:30. I'd like to begin this meeting as we typically do with standing for a moment of silence, and then pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Brad Hand.
Here.
Waiter.
Here.
Next item up is the approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have one comment from Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Under item 4J, we've added the words "and dispose of," which was included in the resolution to set the hearing, but it's not in the agenda item, so I added that in.
Okay. This was one of the changes that came in the fourth box.
So do we have to approve that amendment?
No, you can just approve as noted.
Okay.
I approve as noted.
Okay. Everyone understand? All right, roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Moving on to our public comments. I'd like to read us a few things here. As far as the public comment period, you should do the following. Raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor, myself, and then come to the podium. State your name and address. If you have handouts, please give them to the city clerk before the meeting. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time to someone else. And after speaking, please be seated. If you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you are speaking about and if you are speaking on more than one agenda item. Arrange your comments in chronological order. Try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. Direct your comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered during this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. If you are the presenter of an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. And finally, Iowa law requires certain matters to have public hearings, which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public hearing item should be saved for that item, and the four-minute comment period will also apply for those items. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for attending this important meeting at this time. Are there any public comments that you need to make? Yes, sir. Come forward, please. Give him the mic. Good. Go ahead, Harold.
I'm Harold Posma, and I asked for reasonable accommodations, and I thank you for providing me with them. I also thank Angela for trying to get all of my comments to the minutes, which I covered quite a few things. But I point out that this person was on a muddy dirt road, not a gravel road, and also I made a comment about Teresa Dinardog's home being burglarized on Ninth Street here, just a few blocks east of the community building. And with all the other comments I made, that was omitted. I think I said also that it was Kitty Corrigan from David Dykstra's home on Ninth Street. Anyway, I just would ask that you make those corrections and additions to the minutes. And I, first of all, have a comment about this request from the police department for this making two sergeants. Chapter 30 of the city code provides for the organization of the police department. And I think that what the police chief is asking is to circumvent an amendment to this ordinance. This ordinance provides in 30.02 that the department consists of the police chief and such other law enforcement officers and personnel, whether full or part-time, as may be provided, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that if you want to take action on this, that it should be done by amending that ordinance rather than an item that's on the consent agenda. I also point out that I think the council has to clarify some things about you're going to have two sergeants, so who's number one, the guy on the right or the left? Secondly, where do these people belong as far as their position and union representation? I had some clarification from Angie concerning that or Angela Beckman. And then the duties that are prescribed for these sergeants, well, the duties of the chief of police are already set forth in chapter 30.07, and I guess I question then what exactly duties are left for the chief of police if these are all assigned to those sergeants? And anyway, I would ask that the council back off on that and take a look at this in connection with the ordinance that's already on the books in chapter 30 for the organization of the police department. And finally, in regard to that, it says 30.03, police officer qualifications, and it refers to standards established by the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, which refer to some vague type of psychological and other things like that and so forth. But I think that even the Iowa Highway Patrol has certain physical standards in terms of weight and ability to run, et cetera. And I don't think that some of our officers would meet those qualifications and standards of the Iowa Highway Patrol. And I think that the council, as long as they're looking at that, should take a look at that as well. And in connection with that, there's this request to raise funds for this canine. Well, we already have a canine dog here in Sheldon, and I called the sheriff's department, and that dog since January 1 of 2015 has only been utilized 68 times, which is basically once every four weeks. And I question why we want to have another dog here in Sheldon when we already have a dog here in Sheldon that's based here in Sheldon by the O'Brien County Sheriff. And it's nice to say, well, we're going to raise the funds, but then there's ongoing expenses of the veterinary, insurance, and dog food and other things like that, including going to these competitions, and on and on and on. And I guess I question, what is the purpose of asking? Why, that was never really explained, why we need that in light of current situations? Because when it came to...
You're down to 32 seconds, Harold.
Okay, when it came to doing some things as far as, you know, my wife and I were the ones who basically arrested Tracy Peterson. And anyways, we get no thanks from the police department except to be harassed, and I think crimes committed to us similar to the things that were committed against or committed by O.J. Simpson, who spent nine years in prison. You can't just barge into people's property.
Thank you. I'd ask you to...
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Harold. Are there any other public comments to be made at this time? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. And if you would, stand by the mic there. State your name and your address.
Christine Ryder, and 817 Ninth Street.
Okay.
I've never been to one, so I really don't know how any of this goes, but I wanted to address the chicken ordinance issue. Just coming out, I'm sure people know we've had chickens in Sheldon for over 12 years. Nobody has had an issue. I got statements from all my neighbors. I've done lots of research. We're in rural Iowa. As far as a small town, six chickens is not unreasonable to be kept any different than your dogs, your cats, your rabbits, various other animals. Not only have they been a therapy pet for my foster children, but also for myself and my son with Down Syndrome. I have a proposal in 2010. Cedar Rapids put in a fact and ordinance that would be extremely reasonable, something to look at as far as Sheldon, since this is such a hot topic and so many people in Sheldon own chickens. A permit, an applicant can come and get a permit for, they range from $25 to $50 annually. You take a class, which Iowa State Extension has an e-course, that for those who wish to learn how to take care of chickens and whatnot, you can enroll in that, providing your flock with adequate housing. We've never had an issue with any type of rodents or any predators to our flock. We've not had any issues arise with any of our neighbors in the entire 12 years we've owned chickens. I did daycare for 13. The state of Iowa knew about my flock, actually interacted with them. I've never had an issue with that. I think with them being almost a pet much like a dog, they are actually less of a nuisance to neighbors and various other people. I guess nobody really knew about ours until people started, oh, you know, looking around at their neighbors once it became a hot topic in Sheldon. So I just, I wanted to, I have a bunch of information here that I'd like to leave and talk about, you know, setting forth that maybe Sheldon needs to relook at their ordinance, because I know in your guys' long list of stuff, you have how to take care of them, but then you say you can't have them in your city ordinances. So it's kind of redundant that you tell us how to take care of them, but we can't have them. Anyway, that's kind of what I have.
All right. If you want to leave that information here, just to give it to Angie.
Yes, yes, I will. Thank you.
That would be good. And thank you. And are there any other public comments at this time? Is there anyone that you have on Zoom that might be? Okay. And I'm going to move on, then, to the consent agenda. If you have that before us, any comments you want to make? I was clearing your throat. It sounded like you were going to say something. Okay. All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Moving forward. Onto new business. I'd like to open the public hearing for contract for development for the new hotel, including a minimum assessment agreement with a TIF application and covenants. Have we had any written comments regarding the new hotel?
None.
Okay. Are there any comments for anyone in the public that would like to be made at this Any comments from the council? Motion to close that hearing, please.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Discussion and direction.
Mike, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Mike, there were some minor changes posted to the contract this week. Would you mind summarizing those briefly, the contract for development?
Sure. Just been telling you some dates, which reflects amendment dates and completion dates, and then also just some verbiage dealing with the pardon on heat. Nothing of substance, just to clarify that heat is meant to be granted with the exception of...
Before we go any further into discussion, I realize I didn't call for a roll call on the motion to close the public hearing. Could we have that, please?
Hamilton.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right. Now we can move on with the rest of our discussion. So in terms of direction...
We can have the motion to approve the resolution that's on the agenda.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, then, to item 6B, a third reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinances pertaining to urban livestock. We've approved the first reading on October 7, the second on October 21. Any feedback from anybody that's out in the public? Yes, sir.
I was in attendance at the planning and zoning meeting, I think it was last week, but, and there was a presentation made at that meeting. It brought up a number of interesting points regarding, and it was by a livestock...
Farmer?
Poultry farm, okay. Fairly large, not fairly large, very large. Had a number of concerns about it from the standpoint of introducing disease to commercial poultry producers. Listed a number of things that kind of made me think as far as attracting predators and mice and that kind of thing, and I understand that that can be controlled, but there were some interesting points made there. And in light of our presentation today and things, I don't know if we're progressing a little too quickly here. I don't know. I have some thoughts, second thoughts here. I don't know if anybody else has had feedback from people or not. I know I talked to Brad earlier this week, and he's had a few people contact him. I don't know if anybody else has had more feedback or not.
I have had none.
I have had none as well.
Where are they at, Sam? They're still in the planning and zoning, trying to come up with a solution, right?
Well...
If I might.
Yep.
So if you look at item 4K on your agenda, that was the Planning Commission report on the zoning ordinance amendment regarding residential small livestock raising. The Planning Commission declined to move forward the ordinance amendment that would have created a process that Christine had spoken of earlier. And Mike and I discussed the action that the Planning and Zoning Commission had made, and the P&amp;Z does need to approve the amendment before you can consider it under how our zoning code is set up. So that report was on consent, and really is not something that can be amended. What you can do is, you know, you're looking, if you pass third reading, you are basically closing the door to future individual proposals coming to the city council.
Right, but is it closing the door to any further discussion or ordinance consideration from the P&amp;Z, though?
The P&amp;Z does have the ability to take it up again.
Okay.
It's just the removal of those eight words is really all we're acting on, right?
Right. Yeah, P&amp;Z had an ordinance that we brought to them that was different than this ordinance.
So the information that lady came to share with us today could be shared with the P&amp;Z, and they could take a look at that from that perspective.
Yeah, because I don't think that's going to affect what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the except by exception of the council part.
What we're closing the door on is that we bypassed that committee to come here to get approval on. That's the reason that we came up with the change. But I don't believe that it closes the door on whether or not there's future verbiage that would support livestock in whatever fashion in the city through the P&amp;Z.
So when's the next P&amp;Z? Oh, if I might.
Yep.
So the P&amp;Z is called as needed.
Okay.
So the ordinance, it's important to know that the ordinance that the P&amp;Z considered was by special exception to go to the Board of Adjustment, which is more restrictive than the ordinance that Ms. Ryder spoke of earlier, which is to have a permit process where you come down and get a permit and have chickens. So I think it's important to state that, that if the council would like the Planning Commission to consider an ordinance that, a zoning amendment that is less restrictive than what they had already turned down, then, you know, that's, you could ask them to do that, and that would be up to them to consider it. There was fairly strong testimony at that meeting that swayed them to not only say no to the ordinance amendment for special exception, but to also support the amendments, the zoning amendment or the regular amendment that's in front of you to take out those eight words.
The motion that they passed is, a motion was made by Grind Secretary by Field to deny the proposed ordinance amendment and ask Coiker to come with another ordinance regarding farms in various areas and them being allowed there. So is it back in your court, then? Our court?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, then, that's something different. As we discovered in this process, if you look at the zoning map, all of the green on the zoning map, which is arterial commercial, it was discovered in this process that a farm is allowed in the green. And there's some restrictions in the ordinance, but it clearly allows small livestock to be included in that. So what the Planning Commission asked me to do is to bring forward an ordinance amendment that restricted that, to remove farm from arterial commercial as a permitted use. And I'm thinking that the best way to move forward is to bring them a recommendation that changes it from a permitted use to a special exception, because that way if they want to have, somebody wants to have a corn maze or something like that, you can still find a way to say yes to that.
But, yeah, the question before us is whether or not we want to approve the removal of those eight words from the language, which I'm okay with. So I'll make a motion to, are we accepting the third reading, I guess?
To approve third reading.
To approve the third reading. I'll make that motion.
Do we have support for that motion?
I'd support that.
All right. Further discussion?
I just, I think that we have to take a better look at this particular subject, so...
So with you saying that, define "we," because I think there's where the confusion lies.
Well, it's up to the council to decide what the ordinance is going to be, isn't it? Because if it's... Ultimately, yeah. So they're looking from, well, their direction to Sam was to come back with some kind of an alternative, which I'm not sure we're doing here. Well, I don't think that's exactly what's on the table right now. I think what's on the table right now is this particular change in language that's taking, whether or not to take out the, with the exception or by exception of the city council. All right. But I don't think that, that move is not necessarily providing direction to planning and zoning about future ordinance. So then, would you be willing to look at this? Let's assume that we would pass this, okay?
Today. Here.
Then would we be willing to, would you be willing to consider going forward with some kind of alternative instructions to the P&amp;Z to have Sam reformulate? Or are we just going to leave this sit where it's at? I guess how many times are we going to serve and volley this? Good question.
If I might, Mr. Mayor. So the P&amp;Z asked me to come back with an ordinance that was more restrictive, not a compromise.
More restrictive or more definitive, but okay.
Right.
So where does this leave them?
Well, I mean, one of the...
If it takes out the...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If it takes out the city council, where does it go, then? If those words come out?
Well, it becomes a pure zoning issue, and the Planning Commission has declined to update the code, so then it means they're not allowed. Mike, if you could come up.
Having said that...
We need you at a mic.
You have two codes, city code, zoning code. If nothing happens today other than you approve this amendment to the city code, chickens no longer come through the city council.
Right.
However, if Sam and P&amp;Z do nothing further, you still have the existing zoning code, which does allow livestock in certain limited circumstances. What P&amp;Z has asked Sam to do is say, is there something different that we currently have in zoning code that might be more palatable to them? If they make a recommendation on that, it would then come to you per the normal text amendment zoning code process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the way I was thinking of it as well.
Zoning code, city code. Both city legislation, but different codes. Did that trigger any questions?
So, okay, then I guess...
Thanks, Mike.
But it seems to me, based on the discussion we've had in the council room, we tend to lean towards the less restrictive side of things. And reading through the minutes of P&amp;Z, they're looking to be more restrictive or to do away with. And so I see us as being at odds with each other right now. Would you agree? If we pass this today as it is? I mean, we just passed, we give them the authority, but...
I would say you're not doing anything today in terms of giving specific direction to P&amp;Z. Right now, that's totally at the Sam zoning administrator and P&amp;Z level. Now, whatever they do, they need to keep in mind that it has to get through city council to be an adopted ordinance. But you, I think, are making a fair reading of their minutes where they wanted a fairly restrictive zoning code in terms of livestock.
So if they want to propose a more restrictive zoning code, that could be brought forth to the council, and the council could take action on it?
They could.
Or if they don't, the zoning code that exists today is still in existence and current.
Yeah. You are not taking any action today to limit the status quo of the zoning code. It's, Sam can speak to this, it's just there has been some dissatisfaction with it because of, there's the farm use, there's the suburban residential use, and there's a few other things, but none of them seem to really address what is going on currently and how to regulate Make sense?
Yes, sir.
Ish?
Yes, sir.
We have the motion on the floor. You've heard the discussion. Is there any other comments? I'm going to call for the question. Roll call, please.
Camille.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Done.
Okay. Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
Moving forward then to the items 6C, zoning ordinance amendment on swimming pool fences. I'd like to open the public hearing on that. Are there any comments from the public regarding the proposed resolution? Have we gotten anything in writing?
No.
Okay. And I'd like to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Camille?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
All right. And we have the first reading with the resolution. I'd like a motion to approve that as well.
So moved.
Sam has a comment?
So if you, sorry to interrupt, but if you can approve first reading, but you, unless you waive second and third, you would need to save the resolution until third reading. You can, given the fact that we haven't had any feedback, and this has been discussed for quite some time at the planning level, you certainly could approve first and waive second and third.
How long has it been out in the public?
Well, it's been discussed for several months. It's been in the media and been in front of P and Z.
The only question I would have that would make me feel that we should give it at least another reading is to, is for the public to know that we're ready to take action on it, and that, and that it's time for them to speak up if they need to speak up. So I would just assume that we would, I would recommend that we go ahead and go to second reading, at least.
So we have, draw the motion or table it until the second?
Just interpret the motion that it's approval of first reading, okay? And we're not approving the resolution right now.
Those of you that supported, made that motion, supported it. You're all right with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
All right, item 6D, the zoning ordinance amendment regarding storage sheds. Let's open the public hearing on that one, please. Any comments from the public? And again, any written comments?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Camille?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Okay, similar situation as the previous one. We have our first reading, we have the resolution.
I'll move that we accept first reading and move it on to the second.
Second.
Anything else discussion wise?
I guess I have one question. We're talking about, can I be clarified as to where sheds
So in your link, if you open up the updated zoning map, under 6D, the last link, and go ahead and look towards the left or west side of the map, and it's the gray and the orange. So the gray is heavy in light industrial, and the orange is heavy industrial. And right now, sheds are allowed, but not for personal use, which is difficult for a zoning, it's difficult for a zoning administrator to deal with. And so what this ordinance does is it changes the definition so that you can put a shed within the confines of the setbacks for the gray and the orange. As long as it meets the setbacks, you can go ahead and put in a shed if you get a permit from me, the zoning administrator. In addition to that, Pete, the purple, which is above the gray and the orange, which is C1, and then there's some more purple down on South Third, including the burned out trailer and some other area. You could also put storage sheds in that purple if you went to the Board of Adjustment. That's what this ordinance does.
Okay.
And then there's a companion ordinance that Todd and I have recommended, and it, the issue's become a little bit confusing, but the best way to explain it is that item 6D on this agenda changes the definition of convenient storage to allow personal use storage as a permitted use in the industrial zones and a special exception in commercial residential zones. And item 4I, which you approved a set for hearing for December 2, will change the ordinance so that primary use storage sheds can only be built in arterial commercial zoning with the approval of the Board of Adjustment instead of a permitted use as it is now. Right now, you can put storage sheds anywhere in the green on the map. So what we're doing is a matter of policy, is we're saying, we're saying, you can still put sheds in the green on the map, but you need to come to the Board of Adjustment, because we as a community want to encourage the construction of sheds in harder to use lots on the west side that haven't been utilized for many years. And we believe that this will create additional construction of sheds where they should be. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and I also would like to, okay, when you say primary, so in other words, if someone wants to build a shed for storage, personal storage, in residential single, can they do that?
No. I mean, not as a standalone on a lot. They can build, they can, that's an accessory use, which is already allowed. You can build, you can build a standalone shed within five feet of the property line, you know, in any of the residential zones.
All right.
What we're talking about is if you want to buy a lot to build, to have a man cave to put a boat in, you can, you can do that in, with this new process.
Any further questions? And I'll call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
All right.
We'll have a second reading on these two ordinances on the 18th.
Yep. Very good. Did you catch that, Ange? Second reading for the 18th. Okay, good. All right, moving on to our city manager's report. Nothing further. Okay, Kurt, anything from you?
I just wanted to say thank you to the community for coming out for the Merry Money yesterday. You reported at 9:30 a.m., we were sold out, which is a record, which is crazy. But I think that shows the confidence in super spending here in Charlotte. Our businesses do appreciate it. So worship our hotel, hotel tax revenue does help support that program. So in 9:30 yesterday was crazy, but good turnout, which was good to see here locally too, which kind of translated triple down to the sale of the Merry Money. So $125,000 was sold, and that will have to all be spent locally by Christmas Eve, December 24. So that'll be turned around relatively quickly. So good turnout yesterday. Just wanted to thank everybody who helped and the community coming out.
Great, thank you. Mike, anything further from you?
No, thank you.
Kurt, anything you, Todd?
Yeah, just one thing. Last meeting, I mentioned to you that we'd been working on construction plans for next year and street projects. Recently, we got to the point with updated estimates where it got to time to, hey, we've got more dollars on the road here to do than what we have money to do with. So we had to sit down and make some cuts on what roads we plan to bid and don't plan to bid for reconstruction next year. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. We are planning to bid Oak Street from North 18th Avenue, Washington Avenue. We are planning to include with that a section of North 18th from that intersection north to the courtyard slash village entrance. We are intending on bidding South Third Avenue from 11th Street, the road tracks. We are intending on bidding Pine Street, Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. We intend on bidding reconstruction of North Fifth Avenue from Pine Street for approximately $2,000. As of today, my estimated cost for those projects is $2.589 million, $2,589,000. What that does, though, is it makes us leave out the other road that we had talked about potentially adding in that group with Rainbow Drive from Oak Street down to Washington. The cost estimate on that road has grown to over $800,000 because of some of the research we've been doing. I had to make some choices somewhere. Yes, sir.
Because it's windy?
Not so much because it's windy, because Storm Sewer is in poor condition, so there are some repairs that need to be done on that. All the Storm Sewer structures would need to be rebuilt, some piping issues. And then the big one is the subgrade. Subgrade on that road is, well, it's bad on really, it's really bad on Oak Street. It's also terrible on Rainbow. When we redo Rainbow, when we tear that out, our intention would be to remove a couple of feet of dirt, incorporate cement into that dirt to get a stable source. We don't think we can dig it out, farm it, put it back in and recompact it, and get a product that'll last us a long period of time. So when you start going through some of those processes, it adds a lot of dollars to the project.
And we were looking at about $3 million, right? If I remember right, as far as...
Two and a half million is what you give me in the budget to start work on. We listed off of those roads. My February estimates, I mean, just to be clear, back in February, not all these roads would have fit in my two and a half million dollars. It was closer. Estimates have went up as we've gotten closer to bid, but they wouldn't have all fit. So I always knew there was going to have to be cuts, just didn't know where they were going to be. And ultimately, if bids come in really good, maybe we'll have some leftover funds. If bids come in high, and we may have to cut again. Because we're, I mean, we're banging on the top end of that estimate.
And I think we asked you to consider doing the additional east on Oak Street too, taking it down to the entrance of the village too, if I remember right. Because I think initially you had it going about halfway or so.
So I had that road broke up into Wanting East and Wanting West.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we did. And Wanting East is in worse condition, in my opinion, and the engineer's opinion, than Wanting West. Portions of Wanting West, I would say, are in better condition than Rainbow Drive, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, construction efficiency, to start-stop all the time and hop around. So I think the best thing we can do is hammer out Oak, and it fits within our budget that way, or fits much closer within our budget that way, and then we'll come back with a Rainbow project. Trying to put together bid packages here that obviously make it as attractive as possible for contractors.
Well, I appreciate that update. I mean, this is our first really big swing at this for the city, and I don't think anyone's going to count us out, you know, on doing what we're proposing to do with as much as we can do. And I think it's going to set the precedent where we can talk more about Rainbow Drive and others within the city that need attention as well, so that it becomes a ongoing program of the city, not just a once a decade type deal. So, thank you.
But any questions, other questions on that? I'll have.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Officer Dykes, or anything you have to share? Okay, Ange, finally.
Just that that short-term bond is paid off.
It is, wonderful. Great.
$2.5.
Should we wave?
Good. Thank you.
All right, councilman to my left, anything from either of you?
I'm going to put Kurt on the spot, and give me an idea of how many people were able to take advantage of the Merry Money.
It's a really good question. Thanks for putting me on the spot.
Yeah.
In looking at our spreadsheet, I would say that we probably have upwards of, upwards of 100 people, I would assume, that came in and bought Merry Money. So if you do the math, the max was 2,000 per family. So if you do the math there, I mean, that shows us that we're over the $125, but not everybody bought 2,000. So there were some that would buy $1,000, or some that would buy 500. So I think that'd be a pretty good rough estimate there.
Okay. Well, I guess the reason I'm asking, and sorry to put you on the spot about that, was to, was to see once if, because of the conditions that we've been going under, our economy and whatnot, if this wasn't a reaction to that a little bit. I think it's a great help again to our local economy and...
So we typically sell out. So we typically sell the $125. We do typically sell. Last year, for example, we sold out of $230. We don't ever sell out by 9:30. We would have $200,000 to sell yesterday, who I think we would have sold it. I really do. I think people are eager to support local number one and number two, just with the pandemic and if you can get a good deal or if you can save on your dollar. I think people are looking for good deals and save on their, save dollars right now. So I think we could have sold it and encouraged more spending globally. A couple of years ago, we did try to sell $150,000, and we were never able to get there. Closest we ever got was $138,000. So with the marketing committee, their goal is always to, you want to be, you want people to go out, you want that buzz to be there to get out early and buy the Merry Money. You don't want that to elongate to a point where it just doesn't have that buzz anymore, and people just, and maybe don't show up and come out early. So I think we'll revisit them. We always do every year during budget time. We talk about it. It's funded through our hotel, hotel tax revenue that we receive. So this is priority of spending and budgeting. So I think it's worthwhile.
Thanks, Kurt.
Yeah, you bet.
Sean, did you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilman to my right?
Good.
Okay. And I have nothing further, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Camille?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Veramona?
Aye.
Eggers? Aye.
Yeah, I was totally shocked how quick that...